Good morning. Welcome to the Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. It is Wednesday, November 8th, 2017. We're in the Senator hearing room here at Courthouse Square. We begin our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you would join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, we have a couple presentations here before we begin our business. We have United Way up first, 2017 United Way.
Can we do public comment first?
No, we're going to do this first, all right?
Okay.
So, we're going to do the United Way Employee Contribution Campaign kickoff, and we have Jason Boss, is that how you say your last name?
Yes.
All right. Rhonda Wolf, Liz Schrader, and Cassie Cruz. Good morning.
Good morning. Morning Commissioners. My name is Jason Boss, Senior Human Resource Analyst for Marion County. I want to thank you for taking time on your agenda this morning to kick off our annual employee contribution campaign to support the local United Way, a campaign that Marion County has participated in for many years. The countywide campaign officially started this week, and county departments are already starting to come up with their own unique way to encourage employees who are able and willing to contribute to this worthwhile cause. To kick off the campaign, it's my honor to introduce Cassie Cruz, the Development Coordinator for the United Way. She is here to give an overview of the United Way and explain why our support is so important and worthwhile.
Thank you, Jason. Hello. My name is Cassie Cruz, and with me I have Elizabeth Schrader. She's our newest addition to United Way as our Development Director. She came onboard last week, and we are excited for her energy and her knowledge and her experience. I also want to say thank you so much for having us here. This is an opportunity we don't always get to have, is to be able to go into our campaigns, to speak with people, to have them understand what United Way is doing as a whole. United Way, for those of you who do not know, we started in 1937, right here in Salem. Eight years later, we have grown to now serve Marion, Yamhill, and Polk Counties. We believe that if we invest in individuals and families, that will help shape our future. Before this year, we were primarily city-centric, our new local United Way. We were primarily in four communities in the Marion, Yamhill, Polk County, until our new CEO came onboard, Ron Hayes. Ron saw what I had seen when I came onboard just six months ago, that we were not serving every community in Marion, Yamhill, Polk County. There were many families that we were not, we were missing the mark on. I'm happy to say now, from this point forward, I can say that we serve every community in Marion, Yamhill, Polk County because of a new program through with Ron's vision that was our board had approved called United for Classrooms. United for Classrooms helps support childhood poverty. As you can see on the screen, on Avid Ridge, our teachers are spending about $600 out of their own pocket to help support classroom needs, and this goes out of normal school supplies and classroom materials. Our teachers are the first responders in our children's lives, that they are seeing the impact that poverty has on them, between the learning barriers, between the socials divide it can cause. United for Classrooms is just a small financial assistance we're giving to every classroom in the tri-county area, which is about 1,492 classrooms at this time, and is a $300,000 project. Because we also recognize that a lot of our kiddos, they're not in the positions they're in because their parents have drug and alcohol issues. I have two families on this screen, and the family on the right is a Chapman family. Chapman family had found themselves living in their SUV after their mom Mary had an injury that left her unable to work. Her husband Joe was having a difficult time supporting the family on his single income. Soon they found themselves in the avalanche of debt, where bills started piling, eviction notices happened, and pretty soon they were leaving their car trying to raise two little girls. And a lot of times, all of our families are facing is because of transplants, they don't have the support of family and friends to stand right by their side, to lend a hand or to open a door for them. Our other family there on the left is Mandy and her son. Mandy and her son found themselves in a situation that many Oregonians find themselves of having to leave a dangerous situation immediately. With nowhere to turn to, Mandy and her son found themselves sleeping in their car. Raising funds for basic needs shelters and our service integration teams is where United Way is stepping in to stand up with our families. Having shelters for our families gives them the first step to set security, to help empower them, to move them on their way to become self-sufficient and thriving once again, as most of our families had before tragedy had hit their lives. Our service integration teams step in alongside our families, guiding them through whatever obstacles they currently have, bringing in organizations and other agencies that may help with rental assistance, utilities, and even clothing and food. One of the great things I love about the service integration teams is that they do their due diligence to make sure services are not duplicated. So, if family comes in for rental assistance for November, that's the month that's what they get help for. They don't go and start double-dipping. And we would not be able to make the differences in the lives of others if it wasn't for the ability to have people that care, the people that like yourself that allow our nonprofits to be the forefront of your mind for change and to help those around us. This is some of the numbers that we've, people we've been able to reach in certain areas as far as dental screenings for children, financial literacy for families, basic needs as far as housing items, rental and utility assistance. We have people who have received mental and medical health support, and then our nights of shelter. We have had over 30,000 nights of shelter that we're able to be, to be able to help individuals in need. Out of all those numbers, that could have grown probably the most would have been our nights of shelter if we had had that need taken care of and addressed. That number is not due to the needs being met, it's just due to our capacity, and that was, one area United Way wants to try to help our local other nonprofits to grow is in their capacity to continue to help individuals and families. Other ways we've been able to engage our community, and that has been so much fun because we were able to bring in our business community, and they help out, excuse me, they helped us collect over 20,000 dental items that we were able to take to companies as in Washington, excuse me, Washington Federal, Wells Fargo, we've been taken up to ADEC up in Yamhill County, and we were able to assemble and put together dental kits that were able to be redistributed out to the families and even shelters that are needing them. And of course, our annual pajama drive that we held annually, it's starting this month and it goes until the month of December. We were able to collect over, let's say, 1,031 pajamas last year that were able to be distributed out to our foster kids in the tri-county area. We're able to do all this because of our Days of Action that we had held, and that is a time that we have a week-long volunteer opportunity that we bring our business partners in and match them up with our nonprofits and even out in the community. One of the fun ones that we had was with North Salem Football Team. Seeing these young men give back to their community, they came in and they helped put together the classrooms for Auburn, Four Corners, two of the other schools in the Salem-Kaiser School District, and it was a lot of fun to watch these young men come in and their teachers see them maybe for the first time since they are in second and third grade, and their teacher maybe only standing five foot compared to the six-foot young man in front of them, and they just can't believe how much he had grown and seeing the servant's heart that he had had giving back to the school that once helped see him through. So, these are the opportunities that we get to be able to help and create for our community that allow us to connect and connect people to resources, allow people to connect to volunteer engagement opportunities, to give back, to make it that whole live United feel. And it's a wonderful opportunity to have, that we get to have personally and that we're able to give back to our communities. So, we're really grateful for that, and we're able to have that in any county, in any community that we serve in. This here is our President's Leadership Circle. The businesses that you see on the screen believe in the power of marketing and also understand the cost of marketing. We cannot get our message out, we cannot give our proper thanks, whether it is a piece of paper that has our outcomes, a pledge form, a pen, or just a thank you item for someone who's been working tirelessly on their United Way campaign, if it was not for these companies that you see on the screen right there. These companies pay sponsorship fees to be part of the President's Leadership Circle, which then help us in our marketing costs, which allows me to say 100% of our donors' dollars go strictly to the work itself and not towards any marketing costs. So, as we ask all of our campaigns, we ask people to give, and giving is more than just fiduciary. We ask people if they can give their time, give their skills, give their talents, because what you have could be the inspiration and life of another. We ask that you advocate for those, as I know many of you sitting here do. We ask people to volunteer and to give, because one of the greatest things that we can do is to give back to our community, because that shows we are truly thriving, is when we can give. I thank you for this time, I thank you for having us here, and we look forward to being here next time. Thank you.
Thanks, Cassie.
Is there any questions or comments?
Did you want to add anything, or?
Good morning. Thank you. I don't, Cassie actually covers that very well. I think our main message at this point is to assure that we communicate our commitment to our three counties and our communities, that we are, our latest campaign for United for Classrooms is something that our Executive Director and that we as a team feel very strongly about. Last night I met with some community members in the Salem-Kaiser School District, and we're working really hard to build partnerships in the community so that we can make a difference.
Very good. You have questions?
Ma'am Chair, yeah, no question. I guess I wanted to just make a statement on the classroom issue, and as a board member, and it's great to see the change, and I know it's been some, how do I want to say this? Some community angst over some of the changes that we made, but bringing in the money before we spend it has been really, really important. But on the school issue, I think it's important, as Cassie, you mentioned the fact that we're out in all those communities, that the implementation strategy of that is to go out to the smaller schools first, and in Ron Hayes speaking with Christie, the Superintendent here in Salem-Kaiser, totally supported that, because those small schools are really the ones that need that. So, I think that there's a strategy there that's really helpful. How many, can you say how many schools we've already funded at the $200 per classroom level, or do we know how many school districts?
So, school districts currently, we've had two recipients of checks for their school districts, and that was Yamhill-Carlton and North Marion. We just received back the memorandum of understanding from Woodburn School District. I've received, we've already sent out to Sheridan, Salem-Kaiser, and I would like to address Salem-Kaiser quickly. Salem-Kaiser, because it is a large school district, we are adding actually Salem-Kaiser intermediately, so they're not left out, so we are continuing on that outlaying area of need for our rural communities, but still adding Salem-Kaiser in there as we continue to fundraise. And then we have four other memorandums of understanding out, and then we'll be rolling out with the rest of them. So, as soon as I receive them in, and we've already had two sponsors step up, which is how we were able to launch this off the ground, if it wasn't for our sponsors, we wouldn't have been able to do this as quickly and moved as swiftly as, so we were able to start with four school districts because of that.
So, is there any tools that you have available for us, and Jolene, who's our Public Information Officer, is out with a death in the family, but is there any tools that you have available for us to try to communicate to our employees, the 1,600 employees in Marion County that would say, you know, your $15 a month will fund one classroom? Do you have that broke down?
We do, and that's something I need to let you know, and I'm glad you brought that point up, and I'm sure to say to our campaigns, and it's, you know, $20 a month makes $200, yes.
Right.
And I do let them know that if you can give up instant gratification at $5, four times a month, you've just supported a classroom, you just gave a child jackets, shoes, and socks. So, yes, we have that broken down, and we're more than happy to get that out to Jolene so that it can go out to everyone else, so they can understand. Absolutely. Thank you.
Good.
So, I've got a few questions. First of all, thank you for being here and appreciate the presentation. So, we really kicked up our game with United Way several years back, and we've got a pretty active campaign that we do here in Marion County. A couple of questions, I know there's a fact sheet that I used to hand out to people, and I'm sure that you'll have that in the materials that you're going to provide again, but sometimes people want to know about how much overhead there is and dollars going to programs, and I know you talked about the President's Leadership Circle, and I remember some of the narrative around that, that that helps offset some of the administrative costs so that more dollars actually go to the grant programs for donations. Can you speak to that briefly?
As far as materials to go out to that, are you wanting me to speak to?
The percentage of dollars. So, if I give $100, do all that $100 go to the charitable programs, or does 10% of that or whatever go to your overhead? That's what I'm asking.
You know, I will be more than happy, I believe we have that in our annual report, and I can email it to you, because I don't know the figure off the top of my head, I'm really sorry, but I can get you the information for sure.
Okay. Yeah, that's an important figure that people generally want to know, because then the second question that I always hear from people is, well, I'd rather just give directly to the program that I like, I'd rather not give to United Way, so can you, do you have an answer for that?
Yeah, so if you want to designate, and we absolutely designate, and I should have meant that in my presentation, any 501(c)(3) you can donate to, so as long as they are nonprofits, so your church, I even know, you know, other organizations, whether it's Liberty House, Family Building Blocks, you're able to have your funds go directly to those organizations. United Way is a great driver, and I will let you know a bit of my past, I was with Boys and Girls Club prior, out of Lynn County, prior to being with United Way. United Way made a third of our Boys and Girls Club budget, and that's because United Way has an ability to come into places, campaigns, as in businesses that I would not have been able to go into on my own as someone doing community outreach or development. So, United Way has that presence, and we're able to help promote our nonprofits to other people, which then can bring, go ahead. Oh, and that, we're, so we do, we do strongly suggest, you know, if you have a desire and a passion, and it is a 501(c)(3), that's all it has to be, is a 501(c)(3) for you to designate and donate to.
Yeah, and I know that's true. I think the other piece that is an important talking point to get out to our employees and the other folks that you talk to, is that not every nonprofit in Marion County is large and has the ability to attract like 1,200 people to lunch and and raise funding. And so, United Way does a careful needs assessment, they work with lots of even smaller nonprofits, and then they're able to distribute dollars in a way that reaches the need, that allows us to provide to others.
Yes, yeah, thank you. That's, thank you, yes, that is extraordinarily true. You know, for those like Titus 3, who is a shelter, they need people to come out and boots on their ground to speak to what they do. If you don't have someone who can go out and to be that, to get there for those marketing or to be, get those presentations, United Way is definitely a great driver for that, because it brings awareness to where there may not have been before. Absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. And I think the other piece that for people to really be aware of is that the United Way dollars are probably some of the most flexible dollars that nonprofits can receive, and I know that there's been kind of a focus on collaboration and that type of thing, and some new initiatives, but I know the traditional United Way funding, oftentimes when you go out and get grants, it has to be for something new, or it has to be for something that you say you're going to sustain, you know, after so many years and that kind of thing, where when you had United Way dollars, you could apply them to kind of the nuts and bolts part of your organization, which is really hard to fundraise for, so.
It is, it is, and being with another nonprofit, there are times where you may not get grants because you have, there's certain procedures or there are some limitations that you're not able to do because of your size, and a lot of times, size, you know, of your program can cut you from opportunities where United Way has been able to step in historically and be able to help people with that, and they don't have those restrictions, as you said, so yes.
So, last question, and this is for Jason. So, are you the campaign chair this year for Marion County?
I am filling in for Lisa Miller, who's out today.
Okay, so Lisa's doing that, all right. So, do you, so, I'm hoping that she really briefed you, because I'm going to ask you a question. So, what's Marion County, how are we kicking off our campaign? What kinds of things are we looking at doing this year?
So, from what I understand is on Monday, the pledge sheets went out to all the departments. Every department has their own rep for United Way to field in questions for the pledge sheets. Each department's actually coming up with their own unique ways as well to come up with ways to bring in donations. I know in Business Services, we are doing our donate for the ability to wear jeans on certain days, and it's very popular within our office, so there's a lot of funds coming in for that, but there's a lot of unique ways that they're doing that. But every department's been involved, the reps have been out there, already, the awareness has been out in the departments, and I know it's been very successful over the last years. Looking forward to helping promote this as well.
Great. All right, thank you. Anything else?
Can my jeans have holes in them?
It's going to cost you extra, Commissioner. But yes, you can.
And last question, ma'am Chair, from me. So, Liz, are you and Cassie available if departments, some of our larger departments need a presentation to talk about similar things, just like you just?
Absolutely. I think that's actually critical, to have that one-on-one experience. And to add to your question about individual designations for nonprofits, we never ever want to discourage anyone if they are passionate about Liberty House, if they are passionate about Chehalom Valley Youth and Services, absolutely never want to discourage them from giving directly to that nonprofit. However, normally what my response would be is that you can designate through United Way, certainly, but the impact of your gift in partnership with all the other gifts that United Way is able to provide is that much deeper if collectively we can have those funds to have that flexibility that you mentioned.
Very good. Thank you. Yeah, I think there's, you know, it's just, there's a lot of, you know, United Way has been around for many, many, many years, and so sometimes people's vision or perception of it is what it was 20 years ago, or.
Absolutely.
Or something popped up, or they hear something, and then it kind of catches on, and it just lives on and on and on, and you go, no, that's not true.
Right.
So, I think it's really good for people to get their questions out and to find out what is United Way in 2017, because that's really what we're talking about now, and the need has never been greater in our community than it is today, so I really appreciate the work that you're doing. Anything else?
Nope, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day.
All right, we're going to add a second presentation under Presentations, and we have GrowEDC here, and Allison McKenzie has got her report, and you're going to sit over there, Allison, unless you have a PowerPoint. So, thank you for being here this morning.
I'm happy to be here. I tweaked my knee, so if I'm grimacing, it's probably not at the comment that you made. First, I want to thank the Commissioners again for funding us for this year, that's really important to the support of our organization and really helps us leverage our time, our talent, and our money so that we can really do good work in the areas that we serve. So, mostly I want to report on two primary projects that we've been involved in. So, for this first quarter of the fiscal year from July, August, and September, the bulk of our time was spent organizing River Fusion 22 and kicking that off for the first time over Eclipse weekend in the third week of August. And River Fusion 22 was our first effort in the North Saniam River Country to do a multi-site, multi-day collaborative regional tourism event, and there was a lot of time and energy that went to that by many people. In the last couple of months, our marketing team and our River Fusion 22 team were working overtime to get prepared. That involved a lot of design, printing, distribution of documents and things along that line, much of which came to a head about two weeks before the event. And there were, there were people in particular that I want to acknowledge who are really helpful, and one who never, one organization that rarely hears much positive feedback is ODOT, and they were really helpful with us when we were talking about signs and sign placement, and particularly Debbie Lund. And what was so helpful about that was not only making sure we had directional signs and things for people while they were in the area, but it also helped unravel a couple of mysteries about why some of our businesses have had problems with sign placement in the past. So, that was really great information, too. Travel Salem and Travel Oregon were really important partners in this. Because of our connection with Travel Salem, we had D Hendrix on our marketing team who does all their web content, and we had Marissa Legarero, who is their Destination Management person. On our River Fusion 22 team, we were able to leverage a lot of their resources as well, particularly in marketing. So, we got some TV coverage, we got radio interviews and things that we just wouldn't have been able to get on our own. So, even though, as we know, throughout Western Oregon, their number of Eclipse visitors weren't as, wasn't as high as we expected, all of our events that weekend were well-attended, and people had uniformly had a good time. So, I'm going to skip over all the stuff we did, because we were just all flat-out going crazy, whether it was Mount Angel Publishing getting something done for us, Lucky Dog Design getting some design work done, Volunteers Out distributing, all of our event producers, we had seven different events in our communities that were going on from Friday through Sunday. I want to focus on what the results were for us that we thought were really important, because the whole goal of this was to showcase our area to visitors, to increase spend for our local businesses, and for our event producers to have a positive enough experience that they'll want to participate in this collaborative regional tourism event going forward. So, first of all, all of our events went off without a hitch, and that's something that you always want to experience, whether they were events only or camping venues, it all went very smoothly. Second, I think the most important win for us out of this process is that this is the first time, at least in the years that I've been here, that communities were sending people to other communities to enjoy events in other areas. Usually, our area has operated within silos, people, you know, hang out in Detroit, and we refer to Detroit, or people in Mill City only talk about Mill City, or Syo, or State, nor Olmville. And this time, we had people from Syo who were going to the Corn Festival, we had people staying at Sublimity Harvest Festival Grounds, who were going up to Mill City. Because of the forest fires and the smoke, the further east we went, the lower the participation level, because there was smoke on the ground, people paid a lot of money to come and see the eclipse, and they wanted to see it and participate in those events. So, that was really important, that cross-promotion was really what we were looking for, and we're really pleased about this. Another thing that came out, because of the wildfire smoke, it was, we realized how really important it is that we have included those outdoor assets in places like Silver Falls State Park, which wasn't influenced by the smoke, and where people who were here visiting were able to go out and go hiking and, you know, ride a horse or look at the falls and those kinds of things. I personally spoke with a family of 13, I can't imagine traveling with a family of 13, who'd been hiking around Silver Falls State Park on Sunday morning and wanted to know where to go next. So, I suggested the event in Mill City, or there was a music event in Syo for them to go to as well. So, we're really pleased about that. We had a couple of hiccups. The biggest one was that, was the amount of volunteer pressure we had toward the, as we were getting close to the event, and most of our, excuse me, most of our River Fusion 22 team members were also producing events. So, as we got, or had businesses that were connected to the eclipse or worked for an entity that had a lot going on that particular weekend. So, we won't do that again, and we'll make sure that we have other team members who are able to volunteer on some of the bigger picture things and not just their own. So, we had, we had, we worked a lot in that last couple of weeks pulling this all together. And let me see if there was something else from this that I thought was important for you to know. No, the only other one was the visitor count was lower than expected, but that was to everywhere. So, places like Detroit, which had the most wonderful setup for the bouncy house and for adults in the meadows right in downtown Detroit, didn't get as many visitors from out of town, but they had a lot of people who were up there already, really enjoying it. Uniformly, we heard people loved it here, we heard people say, I had no idea this was here, oh, this is darling, I didn't know we keep out in the woods, so we're really pleased about that. The second project that I want to talk about is our Youth Engagement and Workforce Development Project, and I want to. is our youth engagement and workforce development project. And I want to, first of all, say that we're having our preliminary conversations already with the Saniam Canyon School District and OSU Extension, I don't know why I spaced on that for a minute, about our program to get business people in front of freshman students in the Mill City High School, and then take them on career field trips. So we're going to be doing that again in a little bit different format, but for the most part, making sure that those kids get a chance to see that there are opportunities for here beyond what they may have already seen before, or that they might see in their own hometown. The second project in this is our Almsville project, which is a Partners in Education project. The center point of that has been the summer literacy program. Out of that grew the August Academy, a three-week preparation for at-risk students, and their migrant program was woven into that to get ready for the school year, and then an after-school program, which United Way generously helped fund for the last two years. So when United Way wasn't able to continue with the funding for this fiscal year, the momentum stopped on that program for a bit because there was no funding for the after-school program. They went forward with the summer program and the August Academy. They have a little bit of a budget shortfall, not huge. So what, what it has done, it's also created an opportunity for the partners to rethink how they want to do things because they don't have the mandate from United Way to continue in the path that they were on. So the city and the school are having conversations right now about what this might look like in the future. And the plan for this program all along was eventually for it to spin off into another home other than the city. So while it's in flux right now, my best guess is that the summer program will look a little bit different next year, and that the school will be taking a really active part in this. So until we had the summer literacy program going in Almsville, the school hadn't seen what a difference that made to have those kids engaged in reading during the summer months. So the school really sees the benefit of that, and we'll see what goes forward. I can't predict right now, but that's what's going on with that program. We had, we referred three businesses to Community Lending Works, which was, which is a wonderful lending organization based out of Springfield, excuse me. The one time I don't bring water with me. And we'll have Maya Hardy from Community Lending Works come back in and do another workshop for us. But we had three businesses, go to them this summer, and they're all at different stages. One is just an idea kicking around, would need some funding. They're one of the few places in Oregon that has money for micro-enterprise startups. But we also had a couple of businesses, entrepreneurs interested in buying existing businesses, and we're starting to see that a little bit more. They can't loan for real estate, though, and so when there are real estate transactions involved, that can make the funding a little bit more challenging for the entrepreneurs to get. And that's where we go, not only to traditional sources, but really encourage family lending that has been so helpful in the past, where mom and dad or grandma and grandpa are earning very low percentage on their CDs or savings accounts, can loan the money to the family member at a higher interest rate, but not as high as they would get at a bank. And that's been very effective. One of our bankers helped us figure that out a few years ago. Let me see here. In terms of our work with entrepreneurs, a lot of it focused on eclipse and River Fusion 22 preparation. So we had about four times as many consults as we would normally have during this period, especially in the summer. We worked with about twice as many entrepreneurs as we would during this period. We had 15 new businesses come to us during this time, though at least five or six of them are businesses that were just connected with something they wanted to do in the eclipse and don't plan to continue. So those were not things that would continue. We did have an Airbnb workshop, and we had some participants there, six of whom are looking at going forward. That's really important for our area because we don't have a lot of lodging. And for whatever reason, all the participants in that workshop were from our Upper Canyon community, so we'll do another one after the first of the year, and hopefully draw in more folks in the state and Almsville and Sublimity area. Lots of client contact hours, lots of tourism meetings. Our last big meeting was the third week in July, and everything else was done in either small groups, on the phone, or by email during, during that period. And the only other big issue that really impacted our area for that, that three-month period ending in September were the wildfires. And we canceled a couple of events, including our follow-up to River Fusion 22, which we're actually having tomorrow. We were going to do it outside, we got smoked out. We had another day camp that we were going to do for entrepreneurs outside that was also smoked out. But the, the business impact was quite significant. Brighton Bush, as you know, was closed for a period of time. That really impacted them and the whole area because people who come to Brighton Bush do a lot of shopping, go to restaurants, and things along that line as well. A couple of key events in the Detroit area were canceled. The White Fang Cascading River Scenic Bike Way event and the Cruze Inn were canceled because of the smoke. And there were a number of businesses that were impacted negatively by the smoke, but there were others who actually did better than they had the previous year, which was not a great year because of the low lake levels, because firefighters were in town and spending money. So there were actually a couple of businesses who benefited from that experience. And I know Ed Flick and his department worked really hard to get people to respond to requests for information about the impact of the wildfires on their business, and they didn't get as many takers as they were hoping. And I don't think that was for lack of trying. We asked people, they asked people. I think there are a lot of reasons, but some folks are reluctant to disclose financial information, period. Some people don't really want to look and see what happened. And then others just didn't think they would ever need a loan of any kind, and didn't see how this, that participating would impact them. So, so I would say that that department worked really hard. I don't know if they still have kept that open, or if in our last round of, of requests for participation, it improved. And Ed would know the answer to that. And, and the reason for getting that information was to see if there could be a disaster declaration in the area to make some low-interest loans available to businesses, but also to help offset the expense of firefighting in the area. And I think all of you know this, and so happily, we have a blanket of snow now on all those places, which really helps put the fires out. So that's in a nutshell what we've been doing. It's been quite busy, and, and we're very happy. River Fusion 22 is going to look totally different next year, and I can't predict yet because we're not meeting till tomorrow what it's going to look like.
Well, thank you for being here, and thank you for the report. So you were at the strategic planning discussion yesterday, right?
Yes.
And you didn't say too much. So I was just wondering, just in, just really briefly, what were your perceptions of that? Do you see that that actually applies to the work that you're doing in the canyon?
Well, and I was only able to be there for about half the meeting, so I missed the tee-up. So I, I, one, I think it's a great process for the county to go through and be really deliberate about strategically where you, you spend your money. What I think was most surprising to me out of the strategic planning process was the piece on focusing, creating a sense of place. I wouldn't, I wouldn't have expected that from a county government. I thought that was interesting. What I see mostly in this process from our standpoint is that there are significant infrastructure projects in our area that we've talked about so many times, whether it's people coming over the hill, need to go to the bathroom, we need to have sewers to get more lodging. The excavation in, in the, in the lakes, under the, lake under the marina is really important to keep that low, that water level high when we don't have a lot of rainfall in the spring and the summer. So I think the role of Marion County will continue to be really leveraging and facilitating those big-ticket items that our communities just can't do on their own. But the other piece I saw coming out of this that I thought was really important is that it's easy in any area for organizations of all stripes, not just government organizations, but nonprofits and businesses to kind of make up their own plans and go the wrong way without connecting. And I, what I liked, really liked about the strategic plan is the connection and collaboration piece so that everybody knows what everybody's doing, and we're not duplicating effort. So people, it's, and this is a growth thing. You want people to do beautifully what they do well. And so we like that part.
Yeah, well, thank you. That's good information. Questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Allison, thank you for giving your report today. A couple of questions. Airbnb workshop, how did the word get out? And you mentioned that it was people from the Upper Canyon. Can you elaborate on that?
This was something we pulled, yeah. Well, Upper Canyon, I'm, I'm not just saying Detroit, I Dan. It was mostly Mill City Gates, people who were there in that particular one. The word for that one got out in the Canyon Weekly, which is a really important distribution point there. The North Saniam Chamber of Commerce has, has been wanting to do this for a while, so they were on top of that a little bit more than some of the places further west. And we were doing this in the summer. This was in early August. It's not easy to get participation, yeah.
I want to make a comment that we have a database of emails here through Jolene that we can, for the Little North Fork and that whole canyon community that we've been working with that have, that have come to a lot of meetings
Great.
that we can help use to communicate issues that are going on up there that would help people. Second question I have, or maybe it's not a question, but I, I was at De La Bra about three weeks ago, and somebody made the comment about what Ed Flick was asking for, and they made the comment saying, well, I really don't want a loan, so I'm not going to participate. And it was, I think, miscommunicated in the fact that what we were looking for was information, not, and supplying your information doesn't mean you're asking for a loan.
Right.
It was just trying to get information. So I think that's important to clarify in the future. And then the last comment that I would make is, I think Grady McMahon has this number in the last, I forget how many years, 10 years? Have you heard this statement about how many acres have burned in the Aliment National Forest?
I think it's 20.
20 years was 55,000 acres.
Yeah.
And this year alone, we burned over 75,000 acres. So in one year, we surpassed the amount of acres that were burned in 20 years. So that impacted things. Thank you for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you. May I add one more thing for the emergency management piece? And I don't know if the, if the department has kept this open. My last suggestion to them was to do another round of PR and educating in the communities, especially through the radio station in Canyon Weekly, to explain what the need was for this information in a way that was more user-friendly. And I don't know if they were able to do that or not, but there may have been, it may be too late, or it may still be working on it. I thought they did a great job getting the word out, too. And there were people besides us getting it out. So, so there you go. Thank you for having me.
Thanks, Allison. All right. Well, we skipped over public comment to do the presentation. So no one has signed up for public comment, so we'll move right to our consent calendar.
Madam Chair, since I am the second vice chair
You are the second vice chair.
And I'm important.
Because someone's having a well-deserved vacation.
Important, yes, exactly. I'm glad you got that one, too.
I got the lingo down.
It's kind of like that regional park, you know?
Exactly.
We're going to say that over and over again. Wow, if anybody's watching, they have no clue what I just said.
[laughing]
Kaiser Rapids is a regional park, and we want to remember that, and
It's part of economic development, too.
Our fellow commissioners on a well-deserved vacation. Okay. So, Madam Chair, I'll move the consent calendar. First, under Board of Commissioners, approve an order appointing Troy Gregg as the Marion County Juvenile Director. Under Business Services, approve a recommendation to uphold pay grade for classification number 059, Human Resource Analyst Senior, and adjust upward pay scales for classifications code number 058, Human Resource Analyst, and position, and number 133, Deed Clerk, number 335, Chief Deputy Assessor, and number 524, Public Health Physician. Under Community Services, approve an order appointing Chief Jerry Moore to an honorary position, and Deputy Chief George Berg to a regular position on the Marion County Children and Families Commission, with terms ending June 30, 2018, and January 31, 2021, respectively. Under Finance, approve an order reappointing Patrick O'Connor, Harvey Rogers, Lori Steele, and Jan Fritz to the Marion County Council of Economic Advisors, with terms ending December 31, 2017. Also under Finance, approve a proposed list of tax-foreclosed real property to be sold at public auction, and set the date and time of the public auction for December 11, 2017, at 10:00 a.m. Under Public Works, receive hearings officer decision denying conditional use, case number 17-020/Brush Creek Solar LLC, Cloppenstein Clerk's file number 5735. Under Public Works, approve amendment number four to the franchise agreement with waive broadband to extend the agreement through December 31, 2018, for cable television services. Also under Public Works, approve amendment number eight to the franchise agreement with Charter Communications to extend the agreement through December 31, 2024, for cable television services. Under Tax Office, approve a property tax refund for special districts insurance services in the amount of $195,085.17.
I will second the motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I noticed on the Finance issued the order reappointing members to the Marion County Council of Economic Advisors that the terms are actually ending December 31, 2019.
Oh, okay.
I did think that was a pretty
It was read correctly.
I did think that was a pretty short term between now and the end of the year.
Thought that was weird, too, so.
So with that correction, Madam Chair, of, under Finance, approve an order reappointing Patrick O'Connor, Harvey Rogers, Lori Steele, and Jan Fritz to the Marion County Council of Economic Advisors, with terms ending December 31, 2019.
All right. So with that correction, and we have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's approved. Just have one item under action today. It's under Public Works. Consider the dedication of permanent right-of-way easement tax lot number 072W31BD07400, located at 795 Lancaster Drive, Southeast in Salem. And Brian Nicholas is here to describe that item to us.
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. You have before you easement documents for a property at 795 Lancaster Drive, Southeast. That's located about two blocks north of the Winco Shopping Center on Lancaster Drive, to give you an idea of where that's located. The property, the county recently obtained property, title to that property through tax foreclosure. The home, it's a residential property fronting Lancaster Drive, and the house was gutted by fire a couple of years ago, and it's sat vacant ever since. And so tax foreclosure, the owners stopped paying taxes, and it was foreclosed on, on tax grounds. So the county obtained a title to that just recently, and it's on the list of properties, prospective properties for auction on December 11 of this year. Marion County received federal funds to replace the Signal at the intersection of Lancaster Drive and McClay Road, and this house is immediately adjacent to that intersection. A little more background is that in this section of Lancaster Drive, our, our county plan for Lancaster Drive calls for a 90-foot-wide right-of-way to accommodate all the public facilities in the right-of-way, all the travel lanes, bike lanes, sidewalks, and stormwater features, street lamps, that sort of thing. Today, that right-of-way is about 84 feet. So we are about six feet shy on the right-of-way that, that's in the master plan for Lancaster. And we also have a construction project coming up next summer to replace the Signal immediately adjacent to that property. What these easement documents would do is dedicate three feet of existing property as permanent right-of-way easement to the county for use in maintaining, constructing and maintaining Lancaster Drive in the future. So we would get three feet of that missing six feet, the other three feet's on the other side of the road. And we could get that recorded and, and that dedication done before the property goes up for auction while it's in county ownership. So there's a couple advantages to doing this. One is when the prospective bidders bid on the property when it goes up for auction, they'll know that that permanent easement is there, so it won't be a surprise to them down the road. There are two alternative ways of obtaining title to that three-foot strip of property. One would be to let the auction, let the property go to auction, and we could follow a right-of-way process during our federal aid Signal upgrade project to acquire that three feet, and there's cost and process involved with that. Or we could wait until the eventual property owner submits building plans, and then we could make that right-of-way dedication a condition of their building permit. This is kind of the, the least expensive option for the county. It's also sort of the right thing to do for a prospective owner, because then they'll know the intention is that the county would like to have access to that three-foot, that three-foot strip. One way or another, we're going to need to get at least a temporary construction easement to do the Signal project because a section of sidewalk in front of that home will be replaced during the Signal upgrade project. So we need at least a couple of feet behind the sidewalk there to the sidewalk there to build that new stretch of sidewalk. So one way or another, we'll need title, at least a temporary easement. So this really takes care of a lot of issues all in one action.
Questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I understand the process in doing this now. I get that. That's no questions about that. I'm just looking at the actual public right-of-way diagram that's on the last page that shows that there's a public right-of-way, because that's a dead end, if I remember right. Is there actually a space between these two? This is the home that we've had problems with for many years, and we need to get it back to something. I get all that.
Yep.
But it shows a right-of-way on the west side of Lancaster, which right now, where does that go and what is that for?
There is a footpath that connects Lancaster to the neighborhood right behind
Down below.
Yeah. And it is an actively used path.
Okay.
The neighborhood really only has one road in, out, and it's quite a bit north on Lancaster, so folks use this to get to the shopping center.
Right.
There's no intention to push a road through it or anything, there is.
No, it's too narrow for a full street, but it is suitable for a path, so we're going to keep it in that use.
Okay. So we have a motion?
Sure. Madam Chair, I'll move that we dedicate permanent right-of-way of easement tax on tax lot number 072W31BD07400, located at 795 Lancaster Drive Southeast Salem.
And I will second the motion. I think that, did we get everything in the motion that we need to do that? Okay. So any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. That's done.
Madam Chair?
Thank you. Yes, Ms.?
I can't remember whether he said it or not. For those watching, it's on the corner of McClay and Lancaster.
Right, yeah. Okay, thank you.
We don't want to send people there to look at it because it does not look pretty.
No, it doesn't.
All right. So that concludes our business. I'm going to go ahead and read our Wednesday to Wednesday calendar. These are meetings where two or three commissioners are present. Creates a quorum. We're just completing our board session here at November 8 at the Senator Hearing Room at Courthouse Square. Tomorrow, Thursday, November 9, is the Kaiser Marion County Meeting. That will be held at Sherry's Restaurant at 4998 River Road North in Kaiser. On Friday, November 10, the county is closed in observance of Veterans Day. But we will be back on Monday, November 13 for our calendar review at 8:30 and management update at 9 o'clock. Both of those meetings will be held in the Silverton Conference Room here at Courthouse Square on the fifth floor. Also, on Tuesday, November 14, at 9:00 a.m., Garten Services is holding a grand opening for their Materials Recovery Facility. Looks like a couple of commissioners have scheduled to go out there and take a look at that. That is on 3334 Industrial Way Northeast in Salem at the Garten North Salem Recycling Center. On Tuesday, November 14, at 1:00, the Association of Counties Annual Conference begins, and that conference goes through Thursday evening. And this only goes through Wednesday. But so there will be no board session next week because of the annual conference. So that is the Wednesday to Wednesday calendar. Anything you want to add?
Well, we're going to go see Garten coming up, but last night, we got to see the Murph up in Brooks. I thought that was pretty interesting. Murph, as those people watching, is where pretty much the
Materials Recovery Facility.
Right. That most of the material that goes there is the remodel, the big boxes that people use for remodels. And as we were standing there, I was watching, it was just so much stuff that people were throwing away. It made me
Kyle's correct.
As a master recycler going through that, you know, we talk about the recycle word all the time, but it's really, wherever we're going to reduce our waste is the first two Rs of reducing and reusing. And as I saw a, I don't know if you saw it, but a snowboard
Snowboard, yeah, we saw that.
Come off the conveyor belt that's going to go into a landfill
Right.
someplace. And I'm thinking, how long is that?
Or get burned up in the
Well, no, that stuff, I found out, it actually goes down to Coffin Butte.
Coffin Butte. Okay, so they don't take it to the
No, they don't take it to the burner because of the capacity of the burner, et cetera. It's a long story. But yeah, it'd be a great education to take people there and see, even with taking things out of the waste stream that they do, how much is just like, wow. I'm thinking, somebody probably could have used that snowboard as a decoration in their cabin or something on a mountain.
Right.
I don't know. But lots of stuff that we use in garbage. And then I went grocery shopping. I was sharing this with Christie and Sarah. I went grocery shopping on Monday. You don't find that unusual, do you? You don't think that's funny that I went grocery shopping. But I was looking at all the
My husband goes grocery shopping all the time.
Well, I don't.
What is wrong with you?
I wish I did more often, but I was looking at all the packaging. Of course, I went through the bulk foods area, and I'm thinking, okay, I can get my nuts here in bulk foods, et cetera. And then we heard last night that plastic bags are only recyclable if it's clear
Clear plastic, right. And actually, they're not even, what they're talking about is like Saran Wrap. They're not even really talking about plastic bags.
Or a wrap that's wrapped, you know, you wrap a pallet with it or whatever.
But then they're talking about whether, if that has labels on it, whether or not you can even use it. So that's what we were talking about our little group. So many things that used to just throw in the recycling, thinking they were recyclable, really aren't. And so people need to really go back on the website and kind of review that list. And some of the things that might have little labels on them that are, so milk cartons came up. I remember we had a little milk carton discussion up in our office, and it has a symbol on it, right, that shows that it's recyclable. But they're not taking milk cartons anymore. And they talked about part of the reason is because they're not clean on the inside, and the milk drips out on paper. And then all of a sudden, all of the paper that was clean paper is now no longer recyclable paper. Salem Kaiser School District, I think he said, what was it, like 70%?
70% of their recycling was milk cartons.
And so they just discovered that it's not recyclable, and that was kind of a shock to them because that's going to increase their garbage a lot and decrease their recycling.
Well, and we've spent all this time and energy educating the school district and the students that this is what they need to do.
Right, exactly.
Now we got to change it. So the whole, yeah, that whole issue is changing every day. And I thought it was really interesting that Will said from Garten that, short-term, this is a painful, bad thing, but long-term, it'll force us to look at new technology and get better at what we try to do. So China's not wanting our stuff. And the other comment that I thought was really interesting, and I've said this about other things, such as pollution, right? You know, I mean, we've made changes here to get away from coal and all those other things. When I was in China back, and I think it was 2011, where, you know, I stood up on top of the Three Gorges Dam, and they built this huge dam with no fish ladders, nothing, you know, all their coal plants. And we were, we're doing this, but China's continuing. And when the comment came up yesterday about we're sending, we're basically, we've been basically sending a lot of our garbage
Right, to China.
to China.
So we're solving our problem, but we're not solving the problem
Right.
overall, because it's just making it China's problem.
Yeah. So it was a good, you know, hour, 15-minute cold meeting last night outside.
Yeah.
So thanks for being there.
Very good, yeah. And the Health Department had their grand opening for their Children's Crisis Center yesterday, right before that, so I had a chance to go to there and say a few words. And very nice, they had Options Counseling and their Peer Services, Oregon Family Support Network, and Youth Move, and I'm trying to think, some of the other partners that are doing work with the Health Department. So it was quite a nice event.
Okay.
All right.
Are we adjourned?
So we will see everyone two weeks from today because we will be taking next week off of our conference.
And is that the week before Thanksgiving?
It is.
Is that the Wednesday before Thanksgiving?
Right, so yeah, we'll be back right before Thanksgiving.
Okay.
So with that, we are adjourned.